Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 18th Webster Board of Education meeting. At this point, we need to move into executive session. Can I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Janice, second by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will return shortly. Calling the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. January 18th, Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion, please, to move out of executive session? By Mike.
Second.
Second by Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And would everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Sorry, I'm having some technical entertainment over here. Okay, we'll give everybody a second. I don't believe there are any alterations or amendments to the agenda. So moving forward, we can move right into instructional reports and Superintendent Ninan's campus news. Oh, this is... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed. Our liaisons that are here this evening, Lauren White, thank you, and Michael. And you've got your name tags. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
As you all know, I am Lauren White, and I will be presenting with you all tonight. As you can see, Charisma is not here tonight. She just came out of quarantine, and I'm happy that she's back and healthy, so... And in her absence, I'm here for tonight. In our school, we began the process for course selection. As we all know, that course selection can be stressful for students, and even for new coming, incoming, new students. And in our website and newsletter, it provides all of the information to decide on new and exciting courses for the next semester and school year. Next, I'd like to acknowledge the following students and staff of the month. Congratulations to Leah K., Gretchen C., Olivia S., and Melorne. All of...okay. All of these students have worked so hard and have amazed many of our student body and staff and have worked so hard. Congratulations to you all. Now into our staff of the month is Ms. Dwell. You do so much for your students, and we can't thank you enough. And lastly, for our musicians of the month, we are proudly announcing the following students. Joyce Lynn H., Leanna V., Nora M., and Jacob R. Congratulations to all of our wonderful staff and student of this month. Okay. Into the tech side of things, our Webster Thomas Programming Club competed in the American Computer Science League. This competition consisted of three topics dealing with computer number systems, recursive functions, and what does this program do? In a contest, number one of last week's seniors, Danny G., finished in first place for the team with seven out of 10 points. Senior Sohail, Junior and a Senior Sebastian H., and Senior Eric H., tied for second place with five out of 10 points. Awesome job, everyone. Now to our senior parents and seniors. Justin's is coming to Thomas on Wednesday, February 2nd, to speak with students about ordering their cap and gown for graduation. And our ordering process will completely be online this year, and our representatives will walk the students through the ordering process. And other items related to graduation, such as like the enhanced tassels and things of that, are also included in this as well. And students will be able to receive a packet home, and they'll be able to have all the contact information needed when online ordering as well. And for those, dates for ordering is on the February 6th through February 12th. And if you do have any questions, you can contact Pam Marcello at pam-marcello@webstercsd.org. And congratulations to you and your graduate. EMCC and MOF programs will be open for students for out of the five days during the week of January 24th through the 28th. We will only close to students on Wednesday, January 26th in order to provide whole staff professional development. And an automated message has already been sent out to the parents, making them aware of the change in schedule. Along with making parents aware of the schedule change, it will inform them that and their student should be checking with their high school administrator and our school counselor regarding what they should be doing during their regularly scheduled EMCC slash MOF class time on the date we are closed. And now from our athletic office, competition season has started for cheer, and the first competition was last weekend, so I'm hoping they did well. For our indoor track, they competed at SUNY Brockport last Saturday. And to our bowling teams, Thomas Boys and Girls Bowling Teams lost to a tough Fairport team Monday night, last Monday, five to zero, respectively. Highlights from the matches included the following high scores. Aiden H. had a 237, 245 for a 652 series. And Alex H., he had a 226 and 614 series. Michael M. had a 205 game. And then for the girls, Emily S. had a 200 game. Alyssa D. had a 191 points for the game. Caitlin A. had a 212 point for the game. And Ashley P. had a 125 points for the game. And she is also new to our school, so I think that's actually quite awesome. Moving on into boys' basketball. During our holiday break, the team participated in a tournament at Nazareth College, and proceeds went to the American Cancer Society. Andrew Q. was named to the all-tournament team. On Wednesday evening, last Wednesday, the boys beat Penfield 51 to 45. Andrew Q. was the leading scorer of the game, and he had about 18 points. Sean M. scored 15 points, and Jackson K. scored 14 points on the night. And on last Friday night, the boys beat Brighton 54 to 52. Andrew Q. had 15 points, four rebounds, and three steals. Jackson K. had 29 points and nine rebounds. Sean L. had five rebounds, five steals, and three assists. And into our girls' basketball, the girls lost to a tough Schrader team Tuesday evening, 48 to 28. Maddie K. led all scores with 18 points. Bella F. had four points in the loss. For wrestling, our wrestlers traveled to Brockport Wednesday evening, and they lost the match 52 to 14, unfortunately. Giving up forfeits at six weight classes due to illness. Winners for the Titans include Jacob M., nine to one decision; Chase G., three to one; Jonathan S., four to two decision; Marley E., 10 to two. For boys' swimming, they met last week at Rush Haneda, and we don't have much information at this time. For hockey Tuesday night, the Thomas Titans hockey team played the rest of the game with Schrader, and the game was suspended due to a power outage in late December. The game started with 6:18 left, 6 minutes and 18 seconds left in the second period. Titans were up three to one when play was suspended. Goals had already been scored by Joe C. with two goals and one assist; Dylan L. with one goal and two assists. The Titans added to the score Tuesday night with goals from Jack S. with assists from Ethan S. and Dylan L. And Carter P. with an assist from Mike S., the Titans won five to one. Next up for the Titans, we had a game Saturday night versus Fairport at the Webster Ice Arena around 2:45 that night, that evening. Or actually, it was at 8:25, I'm sorry. Yeah, so this is all I have for tonight, and on to you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So like Charisma, Brooke was unfortunately not able to make it tonight. She's feeling better. She also had COVID, but she says that she hopes everyone's doing well and that everyone is staying healthy during this time. So recently, some of the business classes at Schrader participated in the Budget Challenge, which is a national competition between many classes. And Mrs. Kyle's class actually placed first out of 95 teams, which is quite impressive. And everyone had a great time. They needed to manage their own budget, their own little portfolio, and everyone just had a great time. Mr. Fedor's classes recently made some cards to give to a six-year-old girl in Fairport who needs surgery, and her mom is actually trying to raise money for that surgery. So Mr. Fedor thought that it would be nice to have all of his classes make some cards, and he sent those cards to the six-year-old. So we hope that the cards find her well, and that was a great initiative from Mr. Fedor. Our 15-1 team also made some cookies for the holiday season, and they even made some snowman kits for the pre-K kids. Overall, they said that it was a great time, and it strengthened all of their bonds within the community and Schrader as a whole. Our Schrader Math League team was also successful in their most recent competition, with Jaclyn H. scoring 18 points for her fourth perfect meet of the season, which gives her the possibility to have a completely perfect season, which almost no one has ever done. We wish her and all of our other math fleets good luck in their final competition, and for those that are going to the county meet, we also wish them luck. NHS is also planning to do a food drive that we are dubbing the Super Bowl. We're going to make it a competition between the classes, and we're going to give the proceeds to shelters, since they're really struggling during this time, especially with COVID. We'll update you on who the winner is next time. And then the final thing that I have is about our Sources of Strength Initiative. So a couple months ago, in actually at Spry, we had our Sources of Strength meeting, where we identified peer leaders and had them come and meet and talk about potential things to strengthen our school's sources of strength. So we had all of those members make posters, and we're now putting them up around the school to identify different clubs and their independent sources of strength. So overall, it's been a really great initiative. People had a lot of fun making the posters. And that is it for me, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you both. Thank you both for being here and sharing your news, and we certainly hope anyone who isn't well is well soon. So thanks for all of your news. We appreciate hearing from you.
Of course. Thank you, guys.
Nice job.
And we welcome Joan on behalf of WTA. Thank you.
Set up quickly. Just wanted to bring the books we're reading for mentors. We had this at the beginning, and boy, did they nail it right. We are continuing to be in this all together. Going to feed you some wonderful things going on with our WTA. Our Schrader Global Team is still doing the Model UN. Thomas had its club, and the kids did a wonderful job, our students. And now Schrader had their global 10-hole program do it, all of the 10th graders, and just kept it at a very three-to-four-minute speech that kids did. They still did their preparing, their delivering, their presenting, their researching. And they worked really hard to make sure that although in past years you have been in close quarters with people, that we did it and kept kids safe and in a learning environment and moving forward. Art met science late December. They were doing in Todd Stahl's class, they were using the Adobe Illustrator, and the studio art students were researching and drawing and doing watercolors with national parks. People expressed such an interest, they decided to make it a fundraiser, and they were able to sell some of those prints, many of those prints, I believe over 100 of those prints, and donate it to Earth Club, so that money and proceeds could go to help our earth. Our Willink Newberry Club, the first semester, which ends in two weeks, I cannot believe that. The Willink Newberry Club is hardworking, reading 10 different books from September until our end of January. They do projects, they advocate for favorite titles. The club is off to the Webster Public Library this week, on the 20th, to finish selecting the best book of 2021, and they play it out like a Super Bowl, and they will be revealing who is the final vote. Our Spry sixth graders and our Spry Science PLCs are hard at work with their cell unit. They love that gest and finding out what things are alive, what things are not. And each year, doesn't matter how many times you've taught it, kids come up, and they come up with new things, and they just have that same enthusiasm and moving forward, even though you have to keep things at a distance. Our State Road fifth graders are certainly being taught by a cohesive community and cohesive group, as all the elementary schools are, and they are fun of exploration and fun. Our alternative ed programs, Operation Green Thumb, came from Towis Thomas Owl Program. It was actually derived from the students. We do an owl store there, and the kids earn credit. Well, they did, certain kids wanted to do a certain process where they picked up trash. And they bought the right equipment. They had our director go out and get just the right things. They did their research on tools, and they go around Thomas outside of campus. There's not much, but they find what is there. And whether it's cold or rain, they go out every week and fill up a garbage bag full of trash, make sure it gets in the dumpster. And that is what they do on their free time. Not all of them, but we're getting there. District level, our mentors. Year two, we have been reading Onward, or Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain. Today was session three. As hard as it is to continue to do our book talks via Zoom and Google Meet, we continue to help with our students, not only our students, but with our teachers and our first and second-year teachers, and reading and cultivating a climate where people can be open and honest and ask good questions and see things from different points of view. So this today was just our session three, and we have four and five in the spring, and we'll be reading. Our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. 16 employees went to the safe zone, and Candace Lucas reports that that was one of the higher numbers from the district. And not only are we working as having a chairperson on our WTA exec board, but we have our task enforcement people and committee, and we're working at our school levels, we're working at our district level, we're working at our community level. And we really appreciate all the work going into it from all the different lenses. Finally, our partnership with our WTA and our WTA cares continues to do more and more every month. Our Polar Plunge is actually in person this year still. They have already reached their goal. Thank you to some of you who have already contributed and continue to contribute year after year after year. So they're, I believe they're revamping the goal. It is in February. It is supposed to be in person this year, so we will see how that goes. And Webster usually comes out one of the top prizes, but I'm not going to bring it this year because last time we did it, we were closed for COVID, following day. So when we get that trophy, we'll leave it in the school. Partnership with WTA is strong. You guys know that, the parades, the floats, the lights, different things that are going on. We look forward to the spring, and we're wishing you all health, happiness, and joy as we continue. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you so much. And we are all in this together, and all are very, very grateful for the work that teachers and staff do daily on behalf of students and keeping kids in school, and we truly, truly are grateful for that commitment. Thank you, Joan.
Have a great evening.
Thanks, you too.
And now we can move on to instructional reports. We're transitioning to board docs, so some of our agendas look different. Some of our error messages on our computers look different, and so we're all transitioning this evening, so thank you for your patience. But with that...
Yeah, and I'm going to start, but as I'm going to start, I'm going to ask Brian and Heather if you guys want to just come on up, and I'll get to you in just a second. I'll go for a couple minutes, but then I'll call on you in just a second here, okay? All right. So first, an important reminder, as news regarding COVID-19 continues to be updated with frequent, with such, with a lot of frequency, let's just say it that way. For parents and for everybody here, just a reminder that you may visit our websterschools.org website to check any of those updates. If you go to the 2021-22 School Year Info tab, you can review those updates. And under that tab, it can be found under the district dropdown menu, as you can see on the screen right there. So just again, always an opportunity to go check if you missed an email or lost an email, trashed an email, et cetera, et cetera. You can always go to the website. Next, another reminder to our parents and community members to participate in the district's latest thought exchange. This thought exchange was launched at the beginning of this school year on January 3rd. Mr. Freeman actually sent an email out via Infinite Campus to our community. It's also a news story on our website. And the question that it asks is, what are the most important things to consider as we begin to plan for our upcoming budget? You can participate online, and as a reminder, your identity is confidential. And you can view others' feedback and rate their feedback as well to let us know what it is that you're thinking. This latest exchange does close at the end of the month, so it'll be running for the month of January. And then we'll close it on January 31st, so that we can look at that information and bring it forward to the Board of Education and the district as we move forward. We just sent the link out again this past Thursday, and we, the first link went out at the beginning of the month. All right. Next, I want to thank our Central PTSA for cosponsoring the upcoming Parent University event this week entitled Technology Balance: Parenting in the Digital Age. And by the way, just as an aside, I am so excited that we're bringing Parent University back here to Webster. It's going to be a great opportunity, I think, for our parents, and it certainly is a great opportunity to connect with the district and the community. So I'm excited that that's going to be back. The first one is being launched this Thursday here at Spry, but in the cafetorium, so it's 6:30 to 7:30. It's also going to be livestream if you can't make it, and you can go to websterschools.org/digitlicitizen. That'll be if you want to be able to livestream or watch the livestream. It'll also be recorded, so you could watch it at your leisure as well. And it's the, our Director of Educational Technology, Joe Monamaro, will lead a conversation highlighting the impact of technology on humans, engaging and communicating with our kids, making safe and respectful digital choices, digital balance, and easy-to-use resources. This is an important conversation for all of us as we continue to navigate a changing social, you know, social networking and social media world that we're all living in. So I hope that many of you can join us. And next up is our campus news. And tonight, we have with us Mrs. Heather Belsamo, our UPK Administrator and Leader, which we've heard from in the past couple of different board meetings. And she's going to give us some campus news about the elementary and potentially about UPK. And we also have Mr. Brian Powers, our Willink Middle School Principal, and he'll be giving us some information and some updates going on around campus at the secondary level. So I'll let Mrs. Belsamo go first.
Thanks. Thanks. So my apologies that you have to hear me two board meetings in a row, but hopefully it's just a couple highlights from elementary. I mean, I'm going to squeak in a secondary one in there, Brian, too, at the end, so my apology to that. So as you've heard, we are all in this together. And so it is one of the most beautiful things is walking through each one of our elementary schools and seeing the staff, custodial, main office, just everybody jumping in to try to help and be as supportive as possible for all of our children. So these are just a couple examples. DeWitt wanted to share with us that PTSA purchased some sleds for them, and what perfect timing. So it has been an absolute joy to hear the kids outside sledding a little bit. Yes, set, go!
Dad, you can't keep pushing!
So just another example of trying to make sure that our kids are getting outside for some of that fresh air. Again, that social learning continues whether we're inside or we're outside of our classrooms. I told you I'd do that, Paul. There we go. Another activity that has been across all seven elementary buildings, some have gone already. These are actually pictures of Schlegel. But each elementary building will be participating, and it's our Grade Five Mission to Mars. And they have relocated just during COVID and been able to still have this wonderfully incredible program for our students and our children. So the fifth graders do a pre-mission, which is through a Google Meet in the cafeteria where they prepare. This is not just a one-and-done. It is several weeks of reading and preparing for their different roles, taking them on, and then hopefully making it back to earth at the end. And so this is their beautiful new space, if you haven't been there yet. But the excitement across all of the buildings is just amazing. You can see an example there of them actually putting their hands in and using some of the technology that's new in their new space. Lots of school spirit days going on. I think Buffalo Bills was the majority winner here in the last, rightfully so, so let's keep that going. We had a staff basketball game with some of our fifth graders at Plank North, and lots of other school spirit days, just to continue that vibe and continuing to have some social learning lessons that are connected to things that you find are important or special or make you important or special. Again, as Dr. McAdam would say, he says, "It's always good to know why you have a day off, instead of just you have a day off." And so you'll see lots of school-wide projects going on, collective read-alouds going on to make sure that we all understood the true value of Martin Luther King Jr., not just the snow day that didn't happen yesterday.
Heard that a few times, Heather.
I'm sure. I'm sure. There's a lot of Inside Out pajamas for today, but that wasn't it. Another exciting opportunity that just has come to fruition with, again, lots of hard work. Main office staffs, custodial, our music staff, our fourth and fifth grade teachers, and then, of course, our music staff, making sure that we were able to offer and get abandoned music or abandoned orchestra back into our school day. So a huge celebration there, and lots of happy faces underneath those masks, being able to play again. Again, another example of that social learning that's taking place. Again, this is academically focused, but such a celebration for us to get that kicked off at the New Year. That intergenerational piece that we talked about before, just lots and lots of examples of buddy classrooms, cousin classrooms. It depends on the building that you're in, what you're looking at. But this is an example of a fourth-grade class coming into their UPK class at Schlegel, and I happened to be there today while they were doing it, and so I thought I'd add that in there quick. The middle picture is a picture of the interviews that the students did with one another. So the fourth grader interviewed the kindergarten, the UPK student, and vice versa, shared about what made them special inside, not outside. And then on the right-hand side there, you see Mr. DiStefano is actually hanging up chain, paper chains, and they had a lesson about perseverance today, to talk about how some were very thin cut, and then they would put them together, and they would break immediately upon hanging them. And so there was a lot of learning that went into that in perseverance, and obviously a lot of love there on that left-hand picture. Of course, ending with a nice little text that a group of us received, I think. Mr. Ninan received this one, and Mrs. Land the other day, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Benz shared with us that a staff member was watching the courtyard. There's lots of spectators for our UPK friends when they're out in the courtyard playing. And so this was a perfect example of them going out and taking advantage of... Our Geotech has purchased a shed for them so that they can keep outdoor toys there. That's another new thing that's happened there. And so they keep their outdoor toys there to play with. And here's a little example of what they were watching. And just keeps going. And doesn't... And doesn't stop until the wall. So, you know, but the most important part there for, I think, our adults and our children is the example of teamwork that they're able to see while they're building that snowman. And that's it for elementary. Mr. Powers?
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. And hello, everyone. And again, thank, thank you to the board for, for having us here tonight and giving us the opportunity to share a little bit of, of the excitement that's going on in, in our schools. And again, I'm Brian Powers, the Principal of Willink Middle School and happy to, to share a little bit of what's been taking place in our secondary buildings as we finish December and as we've, as we've moved into January. To build on what Heather shared with the theme of collaboration, and I heard her say it many times as well, which is, comes to mind for secondary, which is really a celebration. So December and January gave us an opportunity to see our students really back in action in ways that, that weren't always possible last year. And December and January are, are concert seasons and several concerts in December, several still in front of us here in January, but a chance for our students to perform and to be able to showcase the things, the learning that's going on inside the classroom, outside of the classroom. So that, that was a really great way to, to go into the, the cold and, you know, always darkening month of, of December. And it's great to see it getting lighter and lighter a little bit every day. Spry shared a collage, again, highlighting those concerts that took place and are continuing to, as well as a cameo of Mr. Neenan serving lunch with Spry administrators, showing himself to be a jack of many, many trades. And again, some spirit weeks, dress-up days, you know, tied to themes, tied to assets, tied to building that community are, at their core, just a lot of fun, but can be very, very uplifting and, and great to see our Spry students celebrating some of those, those theme days as we went into the, to the holiday break.
Hey, Mr. Powers, just a quick aside, they were very excited that the day that, that worked out with our calendars ended up being Pasta Day. They were very excited that I was working, working the red sauce.
Yeah, red sauce in a suit is a, is a challenge.
That was my job, yep. They were an awesome staff, though. It was really, it was, we had such a great time. It was a lot of fun and the kids were fantastic. It was really nice to see how respectful the kids were. It was great.
That's great. And I'll use the opportunity to say, Mr. Neenan, if you'd ever like to come to Willink Pasta Day, you're more than welcome. We'd love to have you. Our, again, similar to what some of our elementary experiences, our Owl Middle has had a chance to take their learning to the Rochester Museum and Science Center. Some photographs here of students really just interacting with the spaces there. It's just such a great local asset to have and a great opportunity for our students, all of our students to be able to, to take that out of the classroom, to have some fun experiences and to bring that back and continue. And again, we're, we're very excited at Willink to be, to be sharing our space with Owl Middle School this year, the great, great students and great staff. It's wonderful for all of us. And, and really, from, from both high schools and both middle schools, January has, just these, this past, the past two weeks, have been our opportunity for our eighth grade students to engage in Titan Day and Warrior Days, which is a tradition that started years ago, I think when Mr. Neenan was principal at Willink Middle School. But this, this idea of transitioning our eighth graders to the high schools by, in the past, what has been an opportunity for high school teachers, high school students and staff to come to the middle schools and, and really present some of the opportunities and, and have student-to-student conversations about what, what to expect out of their high school experience. And it's really grown and it's really been not only a helpful experience, I think, for our eighth grade students, but a chance to connect buildings and staff and really see, see what's, see what's out there. What, what changed this year, and I think it changed, it has been pretty widely accepted, it was something that Schrader and Spry had, had piloted or tried in 2020. And both middle schools and high schools did this year was we brought our students to the high schools. And so they got to walk in the shoes of, of next year. They, they were able to see the classrooms and the spaces, you know, to be in the auto shop and see, you know, the size and, and spectrum of, of what, what some of those technology classes have to offer, be in the music and art rooms and see student work. And our, our kids have really been excited about it, have shared a lot of great feedback, so have our teachers, certainly for, for me as well. It was, it was just one more step in creating a great experience where you can see Schrader, the students in that space and, and the student panel where, where kids can ask kids questions. And, and we know that that can, that can be as meaningful, if not more, than some of what we can share, adult-to-student or student-to-adult. And similarly, our pictures from our Willink students, again, sitting, sitting in the, in the morning show studio at, at Thomas and, and seeing, you know, what, what might this be like, picturing themselves in the space as they go through the course selection process coming up next week. So next week, our eighth graders will, will be choosing those electives. And I know our, our parents and our students have been, been able to go to Titan and Warrior Knights and be able to really, especially if it's the first child and family coming through, really start to unpack what, what does that look like and what's out there for me. So it's an exciting time and it's, and it's great to see our, our kids in the middle schools with their, with their peers in the high schools. And so welcoming. And, and again, I think that's something that will, that will, that will look to continue. And again, just staying close to home at Willink, and I know there was wonderful initiatives in, in every building throughout the district, but just the, the giving and the generosity that comes with the holiday season. And at Willink, we have a Giving Tree activity. And I know at, at all of our schools, things that are similar, but I just wanted to share that because every year it seems like the, the, the giving grows. And I just think that speaks to our community and to our schools and wanted to, to share that as well. And also, again, a chance to celebrate. I know many of you here in this room and, and watching at home, were able to be in the, the parade of lights this year and the float that our art club students and Mrs. Chufu, their teacher, were able to put together. Just really was a, really was a, a fun opportunity to come together as a school district and as a community. I was happy to bring my own daughter to get to march in a parade. She felt very special and appreciated the opportunity. And again, staying at Willink, we, we were surprised by a student, you know, inspired to go out of her way to, to recognize one of our teachers, Mr. Rabinowitz, who we were able to surprise with the golden apple, which is always just a really fun, fun experience and, and a great chance to recognize, you know, the power of our students' voices and, and certainly our teachers who are, who are working so hard to, to give them everything that they, they can. So that was another celebration over these last two months. Those are my slides, but again, I want to thank, thank our secondary buildings and, and the board for giving us the time to, to share some of those celebrations.
And I want to thank both of you for providing us some things that are going on, but just to bring the joy, really does showcase the joy that is happening in, in our schools and all the great things. So thank you both for representing and bringing that information to us. And with that, that ends my campus news. So anybody want, you have a comment?
Excellent. No, I'd just like to say to both of you, we appreciated being at Willink for the most recent learning walk and seeing the Owl Middle space. So the learning walks have been able to tie into the campus news, which has been really, really helpful for us. And in spite of all the challenges that are going on across the districts, it's incredibly important and reassuring to be able to see kids learning and be able to see some of the happiness that's happening in the classrooms despite all the challenges that we're, we're facing every day. So.
I would add, just so you know, every time we go to an elementary school, we always go to the UPK classrooms, always. And we did to the Schrader classrooms as well. So we've seen them all.
No butter, please find the joy.
Yep.
So, thank you both so very much.
Thank you both.
Thanks. And moving on now to our Student Services Instructional Report. I know this is something that's anticipated by many and we appreciate your being here this evening, hoping that others are tuning in as well because this is such important work and speaking to budget priorities that happened last year and the willingness of, of the work of this group, and we appreciate you being here.
Well, we appreciate that you have had us here this evening. I'm going to get us started, but I wanted to introduce just three representatives of an amazing mental health department. And listening to Mrs. Balsamo and Mr. Powers, all the things that are happening in the schools, they really connect to our social emotional learning and to the mental health of our students, the opportunities that they have, whether it's sports or music, all of those things, you know, contribute to their wellbeing. So we're really pleased to be here tonight. And I have Sue Stacy, who is a school counselor at Thomas High School, Joan Reasonberg, who is a social worker at Schlegel Road Elementary, and Steve DiBenedetto, who is a school psychologist at Willink Middle School. So we have all three levels and all three domains of our mental health group. So tonight we've got an agenda for you that is going to look at some of the impacts on mental wellness from the pandemic. We'll take a look at our comprehensive school counseling plan that kind of oversees the work that we do as a department. We have a multitude of community collaborations and we want to share those with you. And then some voices from our schools and what our next steps are as a mental health Some of you may or may not be aware that the U.S. Surgeon General recently, I want to say November, December, issued what's called an advisory on protecting youth mental health. And in the realm of the Surgeon General's office, an advisory is a very big deal that he's putting out that this is something that we need to work on as a whole nation. Because mental health impacts, as this quote says, "every aspect of our life." You know, how you feel about things, how you solve problems, how you cope with stress, our relationships with one another. And in this very detailed report, they've laid out many things for not only schools to do, but parents, foundations, community organizations, to really improve the mental health of our students. So I'm going to turn it over to Steve and then the team's going to take you through our presentation.
So the graphic that you see up there gives you an idea of the different factors that shape young people that we work with every day. We know that nature and genetics play an important factor in mental health, but we also know that how many relationships that we all have in our inner circles and the broader community that impact our daily lives. Everyone here can think of different environments, relationships that shaped who they are today. There are many risk factors that can influence the trajectory of a children's life, and these effects have the potential to be compounded by the ongoing pandemic. We also know that it only takes one relationship to change that trajectory in a positive way. The image you see up there, I think some of you might have already seen before. It's on social media quite a bit, but it does kind of give an idea of just what some of our students are experiencing. A lot of our students have, haven't had a quote-unquote "normal" school year in a while and a lot of our youngest students haven't had one at all. And this is their first year full-time in person, which we are celebrating, but that has had an impact. I'll turn it over to Joan now.
So when I look at that last slide, it can be startling to think about and it can give us pause for concern. But the U.S. General's advisory also gave us reason for hope. And we know that that hope is there because unfortunately, the pandemic is not the first disaster that our country has had to endure over the years. So there's data and research that came from those other events that gives us reason for optimism in that most people, and that data goes to show that most people cope well and show no increase in the likelihood of developing a mental health disorder later on. Current research on our pandemic response is consistent with this so far, with the early findings showing that distress levels of people are already returning to the level they were prior to the pandemic. And measures of wellbeing such as life, life satisfaction didn't actually change too dramatically during 2020. While youth suicide prevention continues to be a vital focus of our mental health department, preliminary research on the pandemic effects are not showing significant increases in youth suicide rates. I know I speak for all of us when I say that this finding is a relief to hear about. In fact, positives are being found in some who benefit from the impact of the, of the pandemic situation with improved sleep, increased family time, more flexible schedules, resulting in less stress and more time for positive coping. The resilience of people has truly been tested and has been proven to be intact and perhaps for some, improving with the experience. I see this every day with our youngest learners. In elementary, our students are coming in whose typical school experience has definitely been interrupted, coming in with lower-than-expected development in social problem-solving skills, social interaction skills, their ability to understand school routines and listening to an adult other than their parent. However, what we are seeing and experiencing is that when we teach those explicit skills, the majority of kids are picking it up quickly and using those skills readily. So I'm going to turn it over to Sue to talk a little bit about what we can do moving forward.
Thanks, Joan. So what can schools do? So schools can create positive, safe, and affirming school environments. Schools can expand social and emotional learning programs. They can learn how to recognize signs of changes in mental and physical health. They can provide a continuum of support to meet students' mental health needs. They can expand school-based mental health workforce. They can support the mental health of all school personnel. They can connect families to community resources and they can prioritize students with higher needs and those at higher risk of mental health challenges. Webster is proactive and ahead of the curve in many of these areas. At our elementary level, we have four new social workers and one new school psychologist. At our secondary level, we have four new social workers and two new school psychologists. This next slide is a graphic of, just a snippet of our comprehensive school counseling plan. It is part of the annual individual progress review where students at the secondary level are asked 13 questions, students at the middle school level are asked 16. This annual individual progress review is an integral part of the comprehensive school counseling plan. It reflects each student's educational progress and their career plan. It went into effect in July of 2019, so we're, we're entering into our third year with this. School counselors, sixth through 12th grade, meet annually with students either individually or in small groups to review their progress. Our community collaborations are vast. Rochester Regional Behavioral Health Expansion, this provides two social workers K-12 in every building that provide homeschool connection. Dr. Brian Harris consults with teams to support our students that are having significant behavioral needs such as school avoidance. At the University of Rochester, we have Sources of Strength. That is a suicide prevention program that uses peer leaders to enhance protective factors associated with reducing suicide. We have Supporting Our Students, which is a grant-funded program that offers semester-long professional development by reviewing case studies with University of Rochester doctors, offering access to a resource bank, and training staff in youth mental health first aid where they can train others. So it's like a train the trainer. We have Community Consultation, which is for our students with developmental disabilities. A certified behavior specialist comes in and consults for students' specific needs. We have WEN, which is our Webster Health and Education Network, which is a trusted adult campaign around substance abuse. It is a network of community members linked through awareness, education, and action. We have partners in restorative initiatives. They train community building circles and restorative discipline. This winter, there will be another training session of community building circles for mental health staff and administrators. And now I'm going to turn it back to Joan.
All right. So with that addition of the new mental health staff this year, we want to be able to share with you some of the impact that that has made. So we've given you this packet entitled Webster Voices on Mental Wellness that shares quotes from you from students and parents and teachers across the district. And there were so many things we wanted to share, we couldn't do them all tonight. So we wanted to give that to you so you could reflect on that later. So in, with, in the elementary, with the additions in staff, all seven elementary buildings now have a full-time social worker and two full-time school psychologists. Previous to this, the support at the buildings was very- full-time school psychologists. Previous to this, the support at the buildings was varied, with some buildings having half that amount of support. So in thinking about how best to reflect the impact that that has made, I asked around my building, and those reflections from some of the other staff are there, but I want to read one to you tonight because they just put it into words so well. Sorry. "In the last few years, I've noticed kids coming to school with fewer social skills and stronger emotions than before. Oftentimes, our kids do not know how to process these big feelings in a healthy and socially acceptable manner, and require a great deal of time and energy. Having more mental health staff this year has been incredibly helpful. In years past, mental health staff were overloaded and were utilized for more extreme cases, and teachers were left working with the others. With more trained professionals sharing a caseload, we've been able to get all students the help they need and deserve, and have had more time to collaborate to provide more effective and consistent support within the classroom setting. Our mental health staff are able to take more time with students, build relationships, and target their help. It's been wonderful." So I just needed to share that one, because I don't think I could have put it together better myself. So the next slide shows you a little bit of student impact, just a little window into. This is a spontaneous drawing that a student did after the teacher and I co-taught a series of social emotional learning lessons about how our brain responds to stressful situations and how to handle big feelings. So, in the picture part, you'll see a picture of her amygdala, the blue warrior, and her frontal lobe, the long-haired warrior, working together to assess the situation and respond in a thoughtful manner. Her words that she wrote on here say, "My true warrior, when I am scared, he calms me down and I feel better. He helps me by taking deep breaths. That helps me, too. When I think that there is something wrong, he tells me to stay back from it. When I'm feeling better, he helps me to think again. I'm glad I have him in my head." So, it's adorable, and yet at the same time, gives a wonderful illustration of how this child has learned not to be afraid of the bodily response that comes with big feelings, but to know what to do with it in a positive manner. So, again, not something solicited, but just a lovely showing of how the learning made the connection. And then this next one just shows a couple of those thank-you notes that come our way sometimes. And, again, these are, you know, not ever solicited, and often show up from the child that you feel like you were least likely to get them from. And, which makes me go back to what I'm always trying to remind myself and my colleagues, that we are planting seeds, never knowing if we're going to get to see them go to maturity, or what that might be, but that we just continue to plant them with the hope and optimism. And, so, it's truly appreciated when we do get to see these examples, and they let us know in such genuine ways. So I'm going to turn it over to Steve now, to talk to you a little bit about our middle schools.
So in the middle school, the additional staff has allowed us to restructure our mental health teams. Before, our mental health provider in the middle school might work with nine separate teams, multiple administrators. Right now, our teams are split by house, thanks to the additional mental health staff, and it consists of a counselor, a social worker, and a psychologist, and that house administrator. This allows us to meet with all three grade levels on a weekly basis, develop stronger relationships and more collaborative relationships with the teachers that we work with, and this makes us more consistent with our processes and our interventions. Brian talked a little bit before about the middle school owl program. The addition of those staff members has allowed a complete continuum of those services, K through 12, which is great. Some of this was solicited. You can read some of them up there. A lot of it's also on the handout that you have, from parents, teachers, and students. But I'm just going to pick one to read from a Red Eight student. "My experience at the Counseling Center is very comforting. When I feel like no one gets me, or I have no one to talk to, I come in and immediately feel better. It's a pleasure to have this opportunity in school. I am lucky. Thank you." This was a great exercise, I think, for us and the students, because you don't always hear it, like Joan says, but helped them realize, too, like what they're benefiting from, and knowing that we're doing good work. On the next slide, the Counseling Center organizes Character Trait of the Month awards, and that is a picture of a recent award given out to our students. But I'm going to turn it over to Sue for the high school.
Thanks, Steve. So I want to echo at the high school as well, that we really have a more shored-up core teams, where we have a social worker, a school psychologist, a school counselor, and our administrator, which is the same format. We meet once a week, and review students, and can offer them more support. It's rare, but at the high school, we do get the random thank-you card. And so, I just, I got one from Mrs. -- well, I didn't get it. Mrs. Kata got it, and she shared it with me. And I just want to read to you what the student wrote. He writes, "Thank you for being with me side-by-side on the long process of high school, and talking with me about my grades and the Broncos' wide receiver that I searched, lol. I appreciate you always being there for me, and for that, I want to give thanks." So, we do get the rare thank-you, so it still happens beyond elementary school. And then I just want to share with you some student voices.
My school counselor helped me because I came here junior year, and I really didn't know a lot about the school, or a lot about the area, or anything about Webster. And she kind of just, like, helped me, like, get settled, like, find my way through the school, like, take classes that I know are challenging, but can help me academically. And it's just like a really good setting. She has really great, like, character. She's really nice. It's kind of like a good, like, friendly face to see when you come in.
They've helped me by just having someone to talk to and laugh with every day, and somewhere to come, and helping me figure out, like, what I want to do after school, since I'm graduating early.
Thank you. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Steve.
So some priority areas for our department have been the development of Webster's social emotional learning framework, and continued expansion of our MTSS supports. This is how I make my coffee every morning. Looks more like a chemistry set. But, so New York State, along with different other organizations, have developed multiple standards and benchmarks for social emotional learning, including the School Counselor Association. There's Aaron's Law, New York State Mental Health, and New York State Department of Education. To help organize all of these standards and benchmarks, we're using, Webster's going to use Well-Researched, real, well-researched, sorry about that, through Castle, to help organize them into Webster's Social Emotional Learning Framework, through Castle's five core competencies. On this slide, you can see a roadmap, and it gives you an idea of where we started and where we're going. This summer, a committee made up of various mental health professionals across buildings began organizing all these standards into those five core competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. The committee has continued this work in the fall, prioritizing standards and developing learning targets for all grade levels. Our long-term goal will be to identify, align those resources to teach the five core competencies with intentionality in mind. This roadmap to developing the Webster SCL framework will serve as a guide to teach our students some of the most essential skills they will need to succeed personally and
And then, we know this graphic is definitely familiar to you all, as you have seen it through MTSS workshops in the past, but we thought it was fitting to mention it as it continues to be our guide moving forward. It shows so well the importance of both academic and social emotional learning for our students' success, with a strong Tier One teaching in those areas for everyone, and available supports there for those who need additional. So tonight, we want to thank you for your investment in a strong mental health team, and for your time in listening to us this evening. And if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Sure. Can we go around, and if anyone has a question or a comment?
Sure.
So first, thank you very much for sharing with us the success that our mental health team has had, or social workers. Very much appreciate it that you reach out. The one question I have is, with the additional staff, are you seeing more students coming in, or is it allowing you more to spend time with the higher-needs, Tier Two, Tier Three, that you haven't had in the past?
I guess it might be a yes. To both of those yes, I do feel like we're seeing more students coming in that are having needs. And at the same time, it is, because there's more of us, it is allowing us to target those needs in a more directed way.
And it's also giving us an opportunity to do more Tier One intervention work as well with students.
Yeah, there's also more time to focus on systems and the processes that we're using.
Great. Thank you. Thank you again.
I'd like to thank you for the work that you're doing, because it's something that has been a priority for me personally, to see our district grow in this way. So, thank you to you for planning it, and to the district for supporting it, because we really need this. Our kids need it. The adults need it, too.
Exactly what Maria said. And as someone who has four kids in the district, relationships are so huge. And all of our kids just come home with the best stories and the best relationships with staff and other students. And it's just great to hear, even when I get text messages from the Sprite cafeteria, because one of them has their feet up on a desk and is getting ultra-comfortable. But it makes me laugh, because I know they're having those relationships with the staff. So, it's just much appreciated, because I definitely see it with my kids, especially.
Thank you for the work that you're doing. And I appreciate the view of hope and optimism, that we know this is difficult work, and it's going to take time, and you've got an extremely dedicated and well-trained team. But to have that point of view, I think, draws students and draws you together in a way that's hopeful. The only question I do have, though, is how would a student find you?
So I can speak to, in the elementary buildings, we are super-visible. We go into classrooms and remind students our names. I am super-proud that I have lots of students ask me, "How do you know everyone's name?" Mrs. Reasonberg, because when I'm walking through the hall, it's like, hello to you, and hello to you, hello to you. And I tell them, because that's part of my job, that I'm here for every student in the building. And I know that all my colleagues in the mental health department do that same outreach work in elementary, so that they know whether they have dubbed some of us the feelings teacher, you know, whatever title they give us, so that they know what we're about. That's kind of how we work to get our face and name out there to the students. And then the same with the parents. Parents are a network. And a proud moment that I had in probably my first month of coming to my job here in the Webster District was that I knew I was in a good place, when I heard a parent in the front office say she brought in another parent and said to them, "These are the people that you need to tell what you told me. They'll help you." And I was like, what a wonderful network this building and these people have built, that that's what a parent knows to do. And so, the word gets out. And that's a proud, proud thing, I think. And it was proud for me to be a parent in the district and know that that's what my children were going through, too.
And at the secondary level, I can say that the Counseling Center is the hub of the building. Everyone comes through our office with questions related to, it could be social-emotional, it could be academic, it could also be, where do I sign up for drivers at? They know that our Counseling Center is the place to come for information, to get help for all kinds of reasons. And we're also very visible. We're doing lots of presentations. We do parent newsletters. We're reaching out to the community, you know, as often as we can, and letting kids know that if they have any questions at all, that our office is the place to start.
So you're the triage center?
Definitely, triage. But we're also like movie phones, so.
That's awesome. I hope the word spreads, as Joan just said, to parents and students. Thank you.
They've asked all my questions. I think this sheet speaks volumes, and I'm so grateful for all the work that you've done. This is my wheelhouse, I always say, mental health. If kids don't feel good, they cannot learn. They can't take that next step. So, I'm proud that we were able to hire so many wonderful mental health professionals. And these notes from parents, families, children, and teachers, they sealed the deal. So thank you for the wonderful work that you all do.
I also want to start by thanking you all for the work that you do. As a high school teacher myself, I've seen the changes that have happened from, you know, elementary, moving up to the middle school, moving up to the high school. And even though we don't see them for a while, we see the results of what they've experienced. So it's important that we address them at all stages, hoping that if we get them too early enough, they'll be okay at a Tier One later on. But one thing I do like looking at here is that, by having more of you visible, it becomes less of a concern. It's not such a bad thing to go to the Counseling Center to seek help. So, it's removing some of that stigma, because there's so many of you available, that even if it's a simple problem, you can ask questions and get simple answers. And nobody's afraid to go ask for that help. Because I know, especially high school kids, they don't like to ask for help if they feel like they're going to be embarrassed. And I think by having more of you available, it's not always about the hard things. It's always also about the easy things. And I think that's critical for all kids, know that if you have a question, if you need help of any kind, there's trusted adults you can go see, even if your teacher at the time might not be that right person. So I just really appreciate that, knowing that I have three kids in the district, and two are already currently in there, and they're going to be moving up. And my oldest gets angry a lot of times. So it gives me hope that through this pandemic, he has somebody to work with and work for. In this first quote from the student, she tells me to be nice to my brother, even though he says mean words to me. I'm pretty sure that was my daughter that said that. Just saying. Because we talk about those all the time, so.
That one just cracked me up, because that was the day after, this is one of my students, and a day after that, we talked about that even, no matter what your brother is doing, he's not here with us, and so there's nothing we can do about that. And so, it's all in how you're going to respond to him. And then this is the next day, that this is what he told his teacher when she asked, what does he learn when he comes to see me? So, I was like, that's perfect. That's exactly what we talked about.
I can't tell you how many times my daughter and my son are like, you know, my teacher or counselor just said the same thing to me. I'm like, yes, coping skills.
They're great.
Yeah. So thank you so much. It was good to hear that we're fully staffed now at these different levels with the mental health support that we have, especially because that, I want to let parents know that, too. Like, this is what your investment is, that you voted for. This is the kind of support we have now. So thank you so much. I can't imagine that there's any other time where your job has been more difficult than it has been over the last two and a half years. So thank you so much for the information, for the outreach to students, because one thing we've talked about with mental health is not all students come to you when they need help. Sometimes they don't know that they need help, and it needs someone to recognize those factors in them, so that you can reach out. So, thank you so much. I really appreciate hearing about this, and I can't wait to tell other parents and other community members how it's going.
I just had to thank you really quick. Thank you, Sue, Joan, and Steve, and Colleen. Thank you guys all for your leadership. And I know that you represent a huge group, and an amazing amount of people that are involved in your group and the work that you're doing. I'm excited where we're going with MTSS, and I'm excited of the future of your department as well. So I just wanted to say thank you, and keep up the good work. We got a long ways to go.
Thank you.
Sure can. Thank you for sharing your evening with us. We appreciate it.
Give me the vote on that?
Yes. And with that, can we have a motion, please, to accept the instructional report? Mike, second by Maria. I'll in favor. Thank you. Motion carries.
And Joan, by the way, if you have those games that were in there, one little card that was up on the wall, that one of the kids thanked you for the games in your room. Next time we're in Schlegel, we're coming over.
Okay. Moving on to board business, the September 2021 Treasurers Report.
All righty. Get into the board business. So first up is our September Treasurers Report. So you'll notice this is the first month where tax payments become received, and we start receiving some of our payments in lieu of taxes. One thing I want to point out, school lunch claims are still on a three-month backlog. It's something we experienced lunch claims are still on a three-month backlog. It's something we experienced last year as well. We thought by the time the end of the year, it started to clean itself up a little bit. But you'll notice that for probably the next three months, September, October, November, we did not receive a payment for the school lunch, for all the claims we put in until actually mid-December. So, we thought that problem got solved towards the end of last year, but we're seeing it again this year. One unique thing that you might notice too is a large refund, which is kind of unusual in September. Why are we getting a refund? And that was actually federal reimbursement for unemployment claims as part of the original CARES Act. That money finally came through for spring of '20. So, we received a huge chunk of money there. And then on the expenditure side, you just see September is the first month with 10-month employees back on the payroll, and the BOSI's bill in September is usually the largest because it's the very first bill, and we pay quite a few of our services 100% upfront, especially a lot of the software and technology and management type stuff that we purchase. So, overall, that's the Treasurer's Report.
Any questions from anyone?
The federal school meal reimbursement to come back in, or is that done now?
So I think we're going to get another year of free meals next year. That's my prediction. There's nothing set in stone. I think it'll be extended at least another year, and then it'll be even harder to go away. So I think it'll be extended again after that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Can we have a motion, please, to accept the Treasurer's Report? Janice, second by Linda. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have the updated substitute rates.
So usually every Ju-, well, July, end of June, beginning of July, as part of the reorganization meeting, we set a whole bunch of rates. Substitute rates is one of them. But clearly, the landscape around this has changed in the last six months. Countywide, really statewide, and you could even say national, because you'd be hard pressed to find a national publication where this isn't happening in a different part of the country. So, we're just trying with some of these changes in subrates that we're bringing before you, is just trying to keep up with some of the market rates that are out there for substitutes. And really, we have two groups, our average per diem subs, and then we offer a higher rate for Webster retirees to come back. So what we have done is kind of incentivize it by a days-tiered system. And this is something we actually looked at almost a decade ago of doing something similar. But as a way to get people keep coming back to Webster, having a little bit of a carrot at the end with the higher rates. So, this is our proposal to adjust those from what we had asked for approval in July, and then really get six months to look at it, look at the data, see what kind of impact it has, and then look to, you know, adjust, change at the reorg again in July.
In some of the other districts as well, like you said, it's where it is right now. Do you know, it looks like we're like right in the middle then. So we have some districts that are offering like a significant amount more, and we are more, we're like right in the middle there?
Yeah, we're more at the end of the road.
Okay.
We're all, it's tiered, I would say specifically because our main competitors, when it comes to substituting, it's really like a regional thing, you know. Very rarely are we going to get a sub to drive all the way from Brockport, that lives in Brockport, to here. It's, you know, location, 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 to a certain extent. That's why you'll notice when we pull our data, generally like, you know, if you went to Dansville, it's, you know, probably $10 to $15 more than what Monroe County would be offering, because they need people to drive there. So, they've always been like a little bit above in the region. But when you look at it, who's around us and what they kind of do, this is similar to try to, you know, keep up with that.
Yeah, good. I'm glad to see it.
Just for people looking at this and saying, hmm, I might want to sub for Webster, what are the current expectations for someone that would like to sub for Webster? What is the qualification they would have to meet?
That's a lovely segue for Mr. Swinson. I just pay him. He hires them.
We have a wonderful relationship. So, we've taken a look at that as well, to try to incentivize, not only with the rate change, and try to encourage more people to, and recognize also people, not lose people. I don't want to miss that either, is that we want to keep the ones that we have, and also as a recognition of the work they're doing. But we have revised our prior, we had to have a bachelor's degree, and that was kind of the minimum. It didn't have to be in education, but you had to have a four-year degree. We have amended that to try to attract more people, where you have to have 60 credits, college credits, in order to sub as a teacher. The restrictions are still the same, the requirements are still the same for being a teacher's assistant or an aide. That has not been changed. But again, the intent is to try to get more teachers in the classroom, because that's the first piece. Obviously, having those paraprofessionals in educational support are absolutely vital. But we've got to start with a body first in the room, and that was our priority, to try to get more staff in there. And this was a way to try to cover it, both with a little bit more financial encouragement, but also to look at the minimum requirements. So, in essence, it's not saying they have to have an associate's degree, but they could have some college, you know, experience to come in with.
And is that changed, that amendment, a permanent thing, or temporary, depending on the numbers?
Everything I think right now is temporary. We're taking a look at that. I think we want to be able to come back to you and say, this was the impact of that. I can tell you that we have received certainly a number of increases in terms of inquiries from different people, even from our own substitutes that were subbing as teaching assistants, are interested now in moving into that teacher realm, and now have the ability to do that, which again, helps us out, certainly in the short term, not sure about long term. It also kind of overlaps with our partnerships that we have with a number of the local universities, where if they're employees of ours, they have a chance to get some tuition assistance from those universities because they work for Webster. So, we've really tried to kind of tackle a variety of different ways to address some of the need.
Thank you.
So, potentially, a student who has 60 credits or more could potentially sub?
Correct.
Okay. And do we put communication out? I know we do, like locally. I've seen some schools, they've actually even sent them to parents. Like, if you're, you know, parents, if you have this, and you want to keep schools open, please get added to the list.
Absolutely. Absolutely. They've gone, I mean, we have, you know, our HR office has a Twitter page, we have a Facebook page, and obviously, our district has it as well, and they kind of retweet each other's information. So that goes up pretty regularly. That's true of any of our postings. We've, I think, I know I've seen them in principals newsletters. We did a little flyer kind of thing, just a little quick thing that kind of has, one of them had the rates on them, and it did say pending board approval. So, that's on there. And then the other was the requirements. So that we've had two different ones kind of going intermixed.
That's great. And the Clem North PTSA meeting, they actually brought it up there as well, which I'm like, you know, exactly. Like, any other avenue that you can get it out there is great, so.
Well, we're saying it right now, so anybody that wants to come and sub.
Large audience.
Good segue.
Anyone else? I appreciate that this thinking and the process behind it was really tailored to Webster, to incentivizing people to come back, to take longer-term positions, and to reach out to the retirees as well. So, thank you. This is, this is great. Can we have a motion, please, to accept? Shanna, second by Linda. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries.
All right. Next up is a bid acceptance. So recently, we, I'll call this one of our last major bids for the 2018 Capital Project. This is for the transportation garage and facilities improvements. And so, we had a great turnout, as you could see from the backup documentation. We had six bids open for six different contracts. We did, what's unusual about this one compared to probably other bids you've seen in the past, is we have a separate fuel contract, because we are redoing the fuel tanks in Fuel Island. We broke that out to have a separate look at that, to get some specialization around that. So, we do have that extra contract here to award compared to previous. And then we also have some state contract pricing for two systems that we're just gonna, we're not bidding. It's part of this project, but we're pulling off of the state contract for the bushwash system and security cameras. A lot of the names on the winning bids, you've seen before for the general contractors. The site contractor is working here now, so is the general, the electrical, the plumbing, and the mechanical have all won bids here at Webster in the past. So, we're very familiar with those groups, feel very comfortable with them. And so, it is our recommendation that we'll move forward with this bid acceptance. Just want to do point out, there is one cross-up. We have an alternate for a snow brush system as part of this. But once we got into the details and worked with the garage a little bit more on how it worked, they actually thought it would do more harm than good, and would take up more space in the usefulness of it. So, we're actually going to pull that alternate and not award it. As soon as you say, "Go tonight."
Does it impact where, like, there's a million, that land is very tight. So, do we have to move buses? Do we relocate? Or what do we do?
A little of everything. So, right next door to us is the town. And I don't know if you guys have driven down that part of Hard Road, or driven back the time to the bus garage. They've actually done a significant amount of land clearing between our two properties. There is a gravel road that we can get in and out of. So, we're going to utilize some of that with, right away with them. We'll probably be moving buses to and fro. You might see, you know, the Schrader parking lot by the Aquatic Center taken up temporarily with some buses. And we're in discussions right now with the local district to assist us in the summer with moving the garage, because there is so much utilities work that needs to be done, that we won't be able to operate over there. So, we're having those conversations now about how we could best do that. And historically, we've done that before. When we built that facility, we worked out of East Rondique. And when East Rondique was building their facility, they worked out of ours. But, so I won't give it away of who we're talking to, but there's a good chance it's East Rondique.
Well, thank you. We'll never guess it.
Yeah.
Thank you. And how long does a project take? How long is that projected?
A lot of it's, so, in the wintertime, right now, they could start knocking trees down tomorrow. But it's going to, as soon as the snow melts, they kind of start ripping out some of that stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion then to accept the Capital Project bid for the transportation facility? Jan, second by Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And next, yeah?
Next up, approval for Food Service Association ratified their contract with a vote on January 5th. So, big thank you to their negotiating team. We started conversations at the end of November, and were able to wrap up negotiations with three meetings, which is a testament to their hard work and, you know, the collaboration back and forth. So, a couple highlights to the Food Service Association agreement. It's a five-year deal. We changed around and consolidated and updated the hiring schedule due to minimum wage, and some of the titles no longer made sense. They were kind of outdated from years ago. Really focused in on the employees we have with wage increases based on years of service with us. One of the things we do, we've done is promote from within. So, an elementary cook manager becomes a middle school cook manager, and middle often moves up to the high school. So, we adjusted what those increases were between the levels to keep that, it really something from within as some, you know, that internal promotion. Longevity was kind of changed philosophically from an out to an hourly increment versus a longevity yearly check. We created a new profit sharing system. A lot of that has to do with some more things that the association has taken on in the last couple of years, with a lot on the concessions end. So, we wanted to do like a give back and try something new with them. So, the profit sharing system is in the contract. Increase in uniform allowance, as well as a couple retirement incentive things, and some tweaks to their HSA contributions. So, all in all, a fairly good contract on both sides, because it answers some needs from the district perspective and some needs from their side. Questions?
Anyone?
So Brian, the previous, we, I know we talked about this, this is moving, previously the contract was how many years?
Their last one was a one-year rollover. Before that, it was four years.
Okay, okay.
So, do you account for this in the budget you're preparing now, because this covers the first year?
So their contract is entirely separate financially from the general fund. It's all run through the school lunch. So, every dollar that gets spent is spent out of the school lunch program. Hence the profit sharing. We could do something different there. We, you know, we don't make a profit in the general fund. But the school lunch, if we do our due end of the year in the black, we could do something like that. That's why it's going to be unique to this contract.
Yeah, I like how, congratulations to everyone who's worked on this and the efforts to address wage compression. It's all very important and very relevant, especially to food service. So, thank you for that. Okay, can we have a motion then, please, to accept the food service contract? Janice, second by Maria. All in favor? Thank you. And Brian?
Keep going for a couple more topics here. So, next up is the BOSI's technology lease approval. It's hard to believe that this is your sixth of the one-to-one program coming up. It's flown by. So, this is really the third installment of replacing every device in the district, as far as the Chromebooks and the iPads. So, you know, 7,700 Chromebooks, 2,650 iPads, and the cases to go with it. We're doing this a little earlier than probably previously, but, you know, with the supply chain issues and some problems getting tech, we wanted to jumpstart this. So, we have it in the summer for the big rollout for everybody. You know, slightly less than the last refresh. And this is the first approval on a three-step process. Webster Board approves first. Next, the Monroe One BOSI's Board approves, and then third SED. So, from here, it takes about really, you know, about a month before then we could actually go and order everything, once we get that final SED approval. So, questions, the backup is there as well with the, you know, line-by-line detail of what we are actually purchasing compared to my summation, if you have any other questions on that.
Brian, where did the, what do we do with the devices that we have from the current?
They recycle them.
Okay, so they go back to BOSI's?
Yeah. The iPads last a little longer, so BOSI's will wipe them, and they might send them out to another district that doesn't want, you know, has different needs. The Chromebooks usually are limping across the finish line at the year three. So, they're, yeah, they're going to hit the electronics recycling, more than likely.
Brian, this is a big project. Who manages this?
Brian Zimmer, myself, our tech team, along with Joe Montomaro on some of the aspects as well. Hopefully, knock on wood, we could return, and you guys could come see one we do over at Willlink, the full giveaway, and how we have it set up, and the learning piece for parents. It's pretty cool. We could get back to that coming up this summer would be great. Thank you.
Hard to believe we're in the third installment of this.
Yeah, it is.
It's been just incredible. Incredible service to our students. Okay, can we have a motion, please, to accept the BOSI's instructional technology lease agreement? Mike, second by Janice. All in favor? Thank you. And the extra classroom audit approval?
Sure. Two quick audit updates. So, the first one is the extra class activity funds. Overall, it's a pretty good audit for the extra class. Overall, it's a pretty good audit for the extra class. Extra class, I think, is the most difficult audit because there is a lot of turnover from one year to the next. Students come and go off of a club, so you have new officers, got to learn new process, occasionally have a new advisor. So it's, it's like a revolving door. So very thankful, we have some solid central treasurers at the four secondary buildings that help with this. Just a few comments on reconciliations, the same things over and over again. You know, it's really about student involvement in the paperwork, which, you know, with middle schoolers especially, sometimes difficult, you know, fundraising receipts, making sure the kids are learning, you know, how to do the profit and loss statements. The only thing on this one is a few more inactive clubs they wanted to point out to us, but, you know, think about it, last year, we didn't have very many clubs and activities running. So not unheard of that a few more wouldn't be running in compared to previous years. So overall, pretty good and, you know, we have a few things from the previous year that we cleaned up, so that's always good as well.
Brian, I know we talked about the, the receipts that are shown here. Those are from fundraising or donations that are made.
Correct. Student fees, sometimes PTSA does a direct support at some levels for certain things. So it's really, the only thing that is not there is any transfers between district funds and extra class funds. That's the only thing that's not allowed.
Okay.
Okay, can we have a motion then please to accept the extra classroom audit? Maria, second by Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And the federal single audit?
And because we get over three quarters of a million dollars in federal funds, we are required to have what we call the federal single audit every year. Every year, they focus in on one specific kind of federal program. So this year was the CARES Act, the very original CARES Act, not the two CARES Act later, but the original CARES Act funding. And then looked at school lunch program reimbursements as well. One change to the report you'll see that is different from years past is we had to put a dollar figure for the PPE that was donated from Monroe County. So we had to collect all those packing receipts that we got from the county, multiply it by the market rate for the masks and the gloves and certain things that we got, and put that in as an essence of a donation and count it here. So that's the one change. But other than that, no current findings?
Okay, can we have a motion then please to accept the federal single? Mike, second.
Second.
Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
And moving on to board reports, we have our school liaison reports. And if we just want to go around the room, and I know last week alone, there were eight PTSA meetings, so we were busy.
With the exception of Plank Road North, which is tomorrow.
And Clem South, yeah, same thing.
So no, no new news.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to start with DeWitt. DeWitt has been selected to participate in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, also known as the nation's report card, NEEP, N-A-E-P. It's the only assessment that measures what US students know and can do in various subjects across the nation, states, and in some urban districts. And students are randomly selected and families do have the right to opt out if selected. And DeWitt's pretty proud that they were chosen, and we all should be. Assessments will be administered the week of February 9th and families will be notified. The Bavona Child Advocacy Center in the Fight Against Child Abuse is in partnership with our district, and they will be presenting lessons in February to help our students be aware of signs of abuse. And at Plank South, Plank South's 43rd Annual Science Fair, which is intended to promote interest in science related topics and to provide the opportunity for all students to have fun while learning in a scientific, learning a scientific principle, is going to be held on March 31st. And entry forms have to be submitted by February 18th. Their book fair is going to be held on February 8th, 9th, and 10th. And they are also having the Bavona Advocacy Center present a workshop on January 20th explaining lessons that are going to be set, taught to students in February, again, to learn signs of abuse. And for both buildings, the registration for kindergarten is going to open on January 24th. At that time, there will be a new link for parents to register children online, and you cannot access that before the 24th. And please check the district websites for more information on these events as well as important updates. And as always, DeWitt and Plank South continue to work hard as a PTSA with administration and with parents, helping to come up with safe and creative events and activities for our kids. And we are very all great, very, all very grateful to all of our schools PTSAs. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Clem South is also tomorrow night. Schlegel has done, they did a lot of activities around the holidays and looking toward what they were looking to schedule for these winter months, January and February, some of the events are being moved to the spring, hoping for, to either be outside or for easier COVID restrictions. Bingo for Books is in April and Square One Art VIP Dance will be held outside May 13th. They're looking to do a fun run in June, and so planning will shift around those events. And they're looking for anyone interested in helping to take on a committee or leadership role next year. Great group of people, just trying to do fun things for families and keep everyone engaged.
To me, Spry PTSA will be tomorrow night, and Schrader's was on Wednesday as well. They had about 15 parents there, which they continue to get a consistent amount of parent participation. And I think part of it is because Stacy has gone out of her way to bring in guest speakers each month, and I think that really makes a difference to get other families involved and hear all the great things that are going on at Schrader. So this month, they had Becky Safe come in and talk about why Goal is great. And she brought a couple staff members and really talked about the reason that they do so well is that they build on strong relationships between the students and the staff. Let's see, what else? In December, the staff was treated to a hot cocoa and breakfast bar, which was all donated by local merchants and families. It was a great way to say thank you to all who work so hard under very trying circumstances. They opened it up also, they continue to involve the Goal family or the Goal teachers and the UPK staff so that it feels like it's one warrior nation. Brian talked about this, Brian Powers talked about Warrior Day. Schrader welcomed the Class of 2026 into the building. It was great for the kids to be in the building to see where they're going to go next year, but it was also incredible for the kids that are in the building to meet with younger kids and show them what they love about the building. So that was great. PTSA is also looking for somebody or an organization who would be willing to build four to five tables for their underclassmen courtyard. They're hoping maybe a Boy Scout, Cub Scout group might be willing to do that, or an Eagle Scout project. They have a spiritware sale at the end of the month, and they'll have another meeting in February.
Shannon and I both attended Thomas. Mr. Whittaker reported that the kids are re-acclimating to school and things are feeling a bit more normal. He feels like masking has not been a major issue for most kids, and there's been a big improvement since returning back. College selection is in the process for seniors. Staff is working diligently to help take care of each other and to stay open and to help students be in school. The teacher liaison also reported that in the classrooms, teachers are feeling a little bit better sense of normalcy. On Monday, May 16th, from 10 to 2, they are planning a job fair. And basically, they have actually reached out to local Webster businesses and instructional opportunities for students to actually engage in our community outside of their education. They recently had a major winter event, which was a hot cocoa coffee event for students, which was really appreciated. The volunteers all commented that, how polite the students were, and the cafeteria staff was a great help, and they could not have done it without them. And they're hoping to have more events like those in the future. Couple things the parents did report was that some parents have not been receiving the thought exchange. So they offered some suggestions of making sure it goes into like the principal's newsletters, making sure it goes into PTSA newsletters, just to make sure it's reaching everybody. And then some parents suggested that maybe the questions on the exchange could be a bit more pointed, more directed. Sometimes they feel like they're a little vague and we don't always get the answers we're looking for. So just a couple of suggestions from families on how to improve the talking point, not talking points, the, the system. And then their next meeting is on May 11th at 7:00 PM.
I know we've been in contact with a couple of different parents in regards to, we actually looked up, we have, in our system, we can actually look it up, and it went to spam. And it basically says that they have marked on spam, not probably by, totally by accident is my guess, but that is something to check, and that they might not have gotten on the first one, but they did get the second one too.
We just found out, we would just want to make sure we let everybody know because it was at least a handful of parents were like, oh, we didn't know about that.
Yep. Glad we got that information because we looked it up today and we hopefully have some of those things straightened out.
And one of them that did not get the original did get. I got the follow up and I sent it to him and they were like, she's like, I did, you know, I got this one. So yeah, that was good. And just to follow up on the Thomas event too, I was, you know, I was really, I was really pleasantly surprised and pleased to see how incredibly polite the students were at the, at the Thomas event because I was there handing out hot chocolate. They were really appreciative and they were all so polite. And I just felt like, you know, when you're at home with teenagers, you have no idea how they're going to be. You know, I imagine that event with my kids at home and I'm like, wow. But they loved it and they were all incredibly polite. They were so surprised to see the candy or the coffee and stuff. And I feel like that, that little stuff is such a great boost for mental health. And also I wanted to comment just to let you know that the dogs, the pets that come through, the therapy pets, the kids really love them. I mean, they were coming by me and they would take their time out from their, their travel in the hallway just to go find where the dogs were, to spend time with them. It just brought an instant smile to everybody's faces. So I thought it was a really great event. And then, so I have, you're all, I have Clem North. Their library renovations are finishing, so I'm very excited to see what their library looks like, especially how good we've seen the rest of the districts. And so their students are going to be moving back in in the next couple of weeks. They, they currently, again, they also mentioned their openings that they have for substitute teachers, student aides, cafeteria aides. They're, they're, you know, they're definitely in need as well, so they're appealing to their parents and reaching out through that group as well. And then they also, they had 12 Days of Kindness, which went over really well with all of the teachers. And I think again, when it comes down to mental health, it was really great for the staff there. They were really appreciative of the goodies and then they also loved, they did handprints with notes that were attached to hand soap. So the teachers really appreciated that as well. They want to remind that report cards would be coming home at the beginning of February, and teachers are currently assessing children to give them an accurate picture of their child's progress. So that's, you know, on a lot of parents' minds right now is how their children are doing. Are they catching up? You know, how are they managing with their studies? So I'm really happy to see that, that coming in place. I know even for myself, I've seen a big improvement this year with my children, so I'm so happy to see them full time. And I feel like the second year, they're getting into their, getting into their rhythm. And then March, they're going to be having their conferences, and they're hoping to be able to meet in person once again for those conferences. I feel pretty optimistic as well. And then for the, they have lots of events going on. They're still doing their Bingo Night, even though it's a virtual event, they're doing a lot of events like that to keep kids engaged. They have wonderful fundraisers that are going through the restaurants. They do one restaurant each month, which has been great for bringing in revenue, and they're considering the Boosterthon run that DeWitt does as well as a great fundraiser for the community. And what I love about that too is that 60% of the funds that they receive from that are actually outside of the community. So what's nice is that it's not, it's not a burden on your community, these fundraisers, and people love to be involved. And there's other challenges, it's not just running. There are character building activities that they have to do. And so it's a great way to kind of round out, it's a character building as well, and it ends and finishes with a run, which I thought was really great. And they're, they have, they always include a diversity and inclusion report. So they have a parent who kind of represents that effort at Clem North. And she did a presentation last week or last month on book recommendations from an anti-racist lens, and she's going to be repeating that with the Clem North staff. And then the PTSA, they're going to be looking for different books that they can start donating and getting into classrooms and the library that really support that effort and help them find appropriate content. And so that is everything with Clem North, and they have another meeting next month. They're going to be working on having the kids making Valentine cards and crafts for their Spread the Love event in February, and those are going to be sent to nursing homes, which I think is really important right now, even personally, I don't, so many of us know people that are, you're not able to visit right now that are in nursing homes and they really need, really need that extra kind of connection with the outside world. So I really love that they're doing that right now.
Thank you. Moving on to Monroe County. Mike, do you have anything you want to share? How's that? Maria?
No, Linda went first.
Okay. Information exchange happened last month, and it was about different changes in harassment law and bringing forth claims. And I'm sure you received the same PowerPoint. Steering Committee meets next week, so most of the work with Monroe County too has been around adjusting to the COVID, you know, constant changes and supporting staff in those, in those changes. And Brian and I participated in two legislative calls with our legislators. One had eight in attendance, they were Zoom calls. The other had 10 in attendance. And what's really been incredible about our new legislators is that they really are listening and in tune to school districts because they are new and they, they don't have some of that background knowledge that you tend to accumulate over time. And so, yep, that was really great to hear from them. And Linda?
Labor Relations is tomorrow, so it will be on Super Evil, so I will be able to report back next month.
For Legislative Committee, we're still talking a lot about the same issues before, so shortage in buses and bus drivers and teachers and things of that nature. Really looking at ways to incentivize, to keep staff, to bring new staff in. We are looking forward to Legislative Breakfast coming up next month.
Anything else?
No, there's the, there's the virtual day, which is February 2nd.
Yeah, hopefully that can still take place.
Yep, and just really looking at COVID and making sure the districts are getting the supplies they need for testing and the support they need with nursing and all those things. So to figure out ways that we as a county can work together to make that happen.
Okay, I think that takes care of all our committee reports. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have minutes from meetings, personnel actions, recommendations on the Committee for Special Education meetings, cooperative bid for lunch, paper and plastic supplies, and food service equipment repair. Can we have a motion please to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Janice, second. Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And now we're moving on to the visitor speaking time portion of the evening. We have two speakers who have registered to speak. If you would like to decide who would go first, we-
Cindy will tell us.
Okay.
Jennifer?
And we do have a new device to help us with timing. Sometimes in our different locations, it's been difficult to see, and so it's difficult to be consistent for each and every speaker, so we hope that this timing device will, will help us with the-
Yeah, so it'll, it'll be four minutes and the green will start, and just so you know Jennifer, the yellow will go when there's one minute left. Okay?
As a teacher, I know these types of devices.
Thanks.
I'll try to do my best for four minutes. Okay. Over the past six to eight months, myself as well as many taxpayers in Webster have submitted various foils to get an idea of the curriculum, professional development, et cetera, that has been taking place within Webster School District. I just wanted to review some of these foils to begin with. One of the records that we asked for were materials, professional development, resources, et cetera, and the delivery of professional development. That was back on July 16th by a parent. It's stated that the district has determined it does maintain records responsive to this request. However, it was denied. Another foil- Another foil was asking, again, for professional development, training to specialists, support staff, even to board members on culturally responsive framework. Again, it was denied, not because of the way it was written, just denied. You do maintain the records, but we were denied any information. Another taxpayer, on August 3rd, foiled the district for communications between Terry McCarthy and Webster Central School District, of specific things such as CRS, CRT, diversity, equity, privilege, and inclusion within the emails, as well as communications between Lucia Kempf and administrative staff within the Webster School District. The district has reviewed the request and has determined that it does maintain records. Denied. I, on September 27th, wrote a foil requesting communications between the Webster School District Board of Education and Brian Neenan and the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Erin Land, as well as other emails between the school board and Terry McCarthy and Lucia Kempf, with specific wording such as diversity, equity, privilege, supremacy, racism, and inclusion. Guess what? You do maintain those records, and guess what? We were denied yet again. This district has talked about, in the board, in all of your meetings, you're constantly talking about the transparency and how great the district and how great the kids are doing. And I can tell that there are a lot of things that are going well in this district, but the transparency is not here. And I am hearing, I don't even need a foil anymore, because you can hear in every single presentation what is taking place in quote "education" in the Webster Central School District, and it's not just here, it's across our nation. And it is very sad. I'm just, I'm just very sad. But you being silent and not accepting our foil requests means you're complicit. I do want to make one more, one more thing, and I know I'm losing time here, but this is very important, because, again, it has to do with transparency, and some of it was brought up about the CARES Act today, as well as the American Rescue Act. This district received $14,036,049 from the federal government, taxpayer money, in order to, quote, implement in the last couple of school years, and it's supposed to go until September, September 2023. Every six months, there's supposed to be a plan submitted to the government of how this funding is being spent. One of the main things in the expenditures, expenditures, is the masking, the vaccines, the social distancing, the PPE of our children. And this is, this is from the federal government, and right now, in 2022, January 2022, Cardona over at the federal level came out with staying in school in person, and he states, in order to continue to keep our kids in school, we will continue to mask, we'll continue to social distance, we're going to test our kids, test to stay, and vaccinate. New York State has a 8378 bill right now requiring all children to get the COVID-19 shot to attend school. A 3192, S 3041, allowing schools and others to administer vaccines to children ages 14 and up without parental consent. A 279, S 75A, allowing New York State to track your immunization status. S 5685 requires heart examinations for public school students. It is not normal for healthy children to have stroke or myocarditis, as it is now being advertised and messaged. This is a known vaccine injury to the mRNA vaccine. This is coming through our ESER funds. For you to accept these ESER funds, you are selling out our children, you're selling out our community for money, and you're harming our children. So I would like to say, start looking at the data. I know many teachers have been sick. I know 70 to 80% of teachers in Webster or staff in Webster Central School District are vaccinated. How many of them came down with COVID? How many of our students are vaccinated? How many came down with COVID? How many are unvaccinated? How many came down with COVID? Wearing masks, social distancing, vaccinating, they're still getting COVID. How many have died in Webster Central School District? Zero. Start thinking critically, start thinking logically.
Thank you.
Good evening, and Happy New Year, and thank you. I don't know if you know, but Cynthia gives you the best confirmation speaking text around with a Happy New Year and see you there with exclamation points, so, thank you. Just for one minute, go back to last meeting, I know someone requested that you hire an Assistant Superintendent just for diversity, and, I don't know, my initial interaction with school boards was from an economic budget point of view, so I'm like, oh, no, please not another administrator. But having said that, it reminds me of 9/11. The CIA and FBI failed us, we, the reports show that, that things fell through the cracks between the two of them. What was the answer? Make Homeland Security a whole other division, you know? Anyways, take that for what it's worth, you know? It's, I'm not sure that you need to hire somebody for that, you're doing plenty. But anyways, that's just a side note. Thank you for, number one, you got the agenda, that's a nice little change at the door, you know? We could get it on our phone, but this certainly is easier, especially if we're speaking late, and then we can see where we are. And you did make a separate room for us, so somebody is being sensitive somewhat and changed, they're being flexible. So I like that. I mean, I don't like that we're split still, but at least it's better than, somebody had to think of that, so I appreciate that. Thank you for the flexibility. And that's kind of what I wanted to speak about, you know, in the old days, Webster was, you were it. All your money came from Webster, and you didn't have to speak to anybody except maybe the Board of Regents, but you didn't have any money from Albany, you didn't have any money from DC, you were your own unit, and you could do what you wanted. It was very flexible. Not now. Now we've got unions, we've got all money coming from everywhere, with CDC, and, and so I'm just trying to wonder, who has to be flexible here? Who has to make decisions, you know? There's the school board, there's the administrators, and I hear the superintendents have their own, they meet all the time, too, and they, I'm sure they come up with some pretty good, powerful input, you know, but it's, so, you know, with the COVID thing, that's where I'm wondering, how can we be more flexible? Things are changing dramatically. I've heard some parents talk about, the beginning of the year, you had a plan, well, things have changed since then, dramatic, I think so. We're learning now that, you know, all your masks, except for yours, Mike, they don't stop the COVID, you know, that one's the N94, N95, they do it, you know? So we're learning that. You know, I've worn an N95 a lot at work, and then I did it for two months when COVID broke out, and then finally, when we were getting over the hump, I forget, I started wearing these because I know I can cheat, they're easier, you can breathe easier, because there's, you know? So having said that, the mask things, we've got to change on that, they just came out with new information on that. The vaccine, that's the other big one. New York State spends a lot of money on advertising to vaccinate five-year-olds. Now, again, I'm being dramatic, we know it's from five and 14, but that's what I'm saying. Money to vaccinate healthy five-year-olds, that's old school, old-fashioned, old science. When the COVID came out, it was a battle. I understand that. We had to hurry up and get the vax out, and people were dying, and the vax first said, you know, you get the vax, you won't get, you won't get COVID, you won't spread it. We know now that's not true anymore, because the vaccine, the COVID changed. To me, it's like a flu shot now. You have 35 to 40% efficacy rate, and it doesn't stop you from getting it, it may just make the more mild symptoms. So we know now that the vaccine, the difference between vax and unvax should be obliterated, except for those that are comorbidities. They already said that 75% of the deaths were people with four comorbidities, not just one problem, not two, four problems. You had to be really bad off to die from COVID. So the point is, those people should get the vax, even though, you know, it doesn't help a lot, but a little bit, but to do a five-year-old, I, I, I'm just, you know, you heard what she said, the New York State might come down to it, and it may not, but that's where I'm hoping you guys have some more flexibility there, and look at the data, the new data, not two-year-old data and stuff like that. Yeah, that's it. So, again, thank you, and let's see what happens, and Lord help us.
Thank you. And with that, we've been in different locations over the past couple of months, and I do have to say, it's nice to be back here at Spry. Thank you to Paul and Kathy for all your work in being the mobile tech setup for our meetings. We appreciate all that you do behind the scenes and your efforts. So stay safe and healthy, everyone. Can we have a motion to adjourn? Mike, and so can my Janice, have a nice evening, everyone.